[S01]你好，这是我的新工作。[S01]我需要你帮我处理一个任务，然后你再回复我。
好的，我这就去处理。
Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to October 11th, 2011. City, this is the regular city council meeting of the city of Watsonville. Good evening, Mr. City Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Samin?
Here.
Yalesh?
Present.
First?
Here.
Martinez?
Montesino?
Here.
Rios?
Dodge?
Here. I am two point on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance and I'd like to ask our Chief Bisbee to lead us in the pledge of, our Fire Chief Bisbee, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Good evening, Chief.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chief. I want to remind everybody to use the Spanish interpretation devices, obtain one from the table by the interpretation booth, turn it on and make sure you use it on channel zero. Around your neck with the front of the device facing out. Para usar los aparatos de interpretación en español, obtengo un aparato de la mesa junto a la caseta de interpretación. Prenda dos y use el canal cero. It's a canal, did I say that right? Okay. Great. I'm three point oh on our agenda this evening is presentation oral communications and we have a very special presentation that we're going to be doing this evening. It's the Mayor's proclamation declaring Saturday, October 15th, 2011, the Walk to Defeat ALS, which is commonly referred to as Lou Gehrig's Disease Day in Watsonville. And I would kill it by saying, and I practice it, I'm myorrithic lateral scoliosis. Was I close there too, sort of? Well, great, well, I'm going to come down to the, to the, the front here and I have a proclamation for several of our community members here this evening and. May I have a member of the ALS Association? Hi, come on, oh, you're right there. Maybe, have you introduced yourselves to the public?
Yeah, I'm Julie Scourge, I am the local ALS Patient Care Manager.
I'm Leslie Kiefer and I'm the Special Events Manager.
And I'm Kenneth McGelder, the Special Events Coordinator for the ALS Association.
I'm going to read a little bit of this for, so people at home and, and the people that are joining us can understand what, a little bit about what it is we're, we're doing this evening. ALS is commonly known as Lou Gehrig's Disease, is a progressive neuro, neurogenerative disease for, for which there is no cure. That slowly attacks the body and its ability to walk, speak, swallow, breathe. ALS occurs throughout the world with no racial or ethnic or socioeconomic boundaries. It's a crippling disease that can strike anyone at any time. The ALS Golden Association, Golden West Chapter, is dedicated to leading the fight to cure and treat ALS through global, cutting edge research and empowering people with Lou Gehrig's Disease to live fuller lives, providing compassionate care and support. The ALS Golden West Chapters is holding its annual Monterey Walk to Defeat ALS on Saturday, October 15th, at Alistair Park in Monterey, which fundraising efforts help support the John Gill Central Coast ALS Support Group, which is comprised of ALS patients, families, and support groups who reside here within the city limits of Watsonville and neighboring areas within Santa Cruz and Monterey County. So through the courage and the strength of ALS patients and their families, and we're so glad that you're here joining us this evening, and that they willingly and selfishly provide a face to this cruel disease by their participation in ALS-associated events such as the Walk to Defeat ALS, by sharing the journey with the community and otherwise demonstrating the resolve to create awareness of the disease. So therefore, I, Daniel Dodge, Mayor of the City of Watsonville, on behalf of the city, do want to present this to you. This is a proclamation from the city for the ALS Association for Walk to Defeat ALS Day, October 11th, 2011. Thank you very much. You want to say a few things, Angela? You can talk to the people or you can talk to the candidate? Kenneth?
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the ALS Association. Julie, I'm sure, I know she wants to speak and, because this has caused dire to her heart and I know she's the backbone down here, so just wanted to say thank you for that and every 90 minutes someone is diagnosed with ALS and every 90 minutes someone loses their battle with ALS. So it's a very serious disease and we're happy to be a part of it and fighting the fight, so I just want to introduce Julie Scourge, thank you.
I have to operate off of cards and I have to hold the mic, so.
I can do the cards.
Or maybe hold the mic. He would hold the, that would be great, okay. Thank you Mayor Dodge and council members for allowing us to be here tonight. I wanted to say a few words about the, how the ALS Association has had a positive effect on the patients that I work with here in Watsonville and Santa Cruz County. My name's Julie Scourge, I live here in Watsonville, I've lived here most of my life. My husband Tony and I have raised our three children here. I'm the local ALS Patient Care Manager and I currently service 65 patients. 25 live in Santa Cruz County and there are six here in Watsonville Freedom Area. I've been a home health occupational therapist for the last 20 years. My involvement with ALS started 14 years ago when I went out to see my first ALS patient as a home health occupational therapist. He's, he was a 42-year-old Watsonville man who was recently diagnosed with ALS. He had a wife and two children and he had to quit work because he was too weak. As I watched the disease progress, he first was using a cane, then a walker, and then a power chair. I had to suggest that he move his hospital bed downstairs because he couldn't get upstairs anymore to get to his bedroom. He could no longer feed himself because his arms became too weak and he had trouble breathing. As his weakness grew, the stress on the family and the patient increased and it became overwhelming. His wife had to work to pay the bills and insurance while juggling caretaking for her husband and their children. The insurance decided that my services were no longer needed because he was no longer getting stronger, but I could see that that was not the case. Things were constantly changing for him and as his needs kept changing, I was able to come up with ideas and resources to help improve his quality of life. He taught me to use the computer because he was a computer programmer. I looked for support in the area and could find none, so I decided to start an ALS support group, but I didn't know how to find the patients. So I approached the ALS Association and they helped me find the local patients in this area. And then we held our first ALS Support Group meeting at Watsonville Hospital 13 years ago and we've held monthly meetings ever since. The disease can strike anyone at any time and an unusual event happened in the year 2008, 2009, when three members of the Watsonville High School class of 81 were diagnosed with ALS. Inez Nabour, Randy Green, and Ralph Razzo. Inez lost her battle in 2008, Randy we lost just two months ago, and Ralph is here with us today along with his family and a strong group of supporters and friends. They were all part of the local support group and I'm grateful that they did not feel alone as my first ALS patient did. He thought he was the only one who had the disease and his family was all alone. No two patients are exactly alike, each differs in the rate of progression and the order the body parts are affected. What they do share in common are that things are constantly changing as they lose the ability to move, speak, swallow, and breathe. They support each other at the meetings with resources to cope with changes. They support each other at the meetings with resources to cope with changes, and strong bonds form, and no one feels alone. The ALS Association enabled me to become the ALS Patient Care Manager, I was actually the first one, back in 2002, and now there are four others like me in the Bay Area in different regions. As Care Manager, I do home visits with patients and families. I make sure that they have the emotional support, resources, and equipment they need to maximize independence, comfort, and quality of life. I coordinate care on the local level with the ALS clinics at Stanford, UCSF, and Forbes Norris in San Francisco. The ALS Association also recognized that patients become too weak to make it up over the hill to these ALS centers, and so they started the Monterey Bay ALS Satellite Clinic, which comes every six months, the UCSF team of experts comes down and treats patients locally. This greatly improved the quality of medical care for patients in the Monterey Bay Area. The ALS Association also enables me to maintain a local equipment loan closet so that patients can turn equipment in that they no longer need, and I'm able to redistribute it to patients who do need it. Anyway, we're having our local walk on October 15th on Saturday, and a lot of the money that goes into that walk comes directly back out to provide these patient services. I do want to recognize the patients who have made the effort to be here today. All the patients who I work with are aware this is happening, and they all wanted to be here tonight. It's very difficult for patients to get out, especially at night. Some are watching on TV, others are hoping to see it on somehow, recorded, but they're all very happy that this is happening. But the people who are here tonight, well, first I've got Ralph Razzo, right here in front of me, and his family, and Jenny, his mom, and friends. And I've got Lenny Alvarez from Hollister, and Lupe, and their son. And, let's see, Ernie is way in the back, he comes from...
He's hiding back there, I saw him earlier.
He's hiding in the back with my husband, actually. And Alfredo Tamaio is in the last row here, along with his wife Maria and their son. He lives in Freedom. We've got Keith Kumada from Aptos and his wife Debbie. And Marty Krieg and his wife Sandy are from Watsonville.
Well, thank you. If I can just say real quick that we want to remind everybody that this is a disease that can strike anybody at any time, and we're really happy that you made the effort to come out and be with us this evening. We're really blessed by your presence, and we really want to be able to honor you, so thank you for coming to visit us.
And I'm sorry, I was moved by the proclamation, I forgot to mention this earlier, I wanted to say a special thank you to Councilmember Bursamine for helping with this as well. I know he has a personal connection to ALS. His niece, Nohea, lost her husband Bully a few years ago, and I know it's a cause dear to his heart as well as ours, and he'll be there at the walk on Saturday for Team Nakahiki. And, you know, it's a big group, it's a lot of fun. The walk, we hope to fundraise close to $400,000 for everyone, for the services, for everybody, and we're hoping to do that across all walks. The goal for this one is $50,000. If you want to come out and join us, you're more than welcome to. Registration starts at 9:30, and the walk begins at 11:00. So, and Alistero Park, thank you.
Thank you. We wanted, the council and I wanted to invite some of the patients to come down and maybe take a picture with us in front here, and, because we, either way, whatever's easier and whatever Chayuto directs us to. And so, Councilmember Bursamine, maybe you can say a few comments why, about this, why this, the members are coming down to join us. So we'll come around this way.
Well, as the council walks down, I'll just say a few words, and then I'll join the council. The most important message this evening is to the patients and their families, please don't feel alone. When my niece, her husband Bully, had the disease, Bully was a former police officer, six foot tall, 220 muscled Hawaiian-American, and it impacted the family severely. But it's just important that the families don't feel alone, and it's important to the residents of Watsonville, like Ralph and all the other ALS patients, and their families, don't feel alone. This evening, you're in the spotlight here in the Watsonville City Council, and I'm sure that you're in the spotlight of all the other city governments as well. Just tonight, it's Watsonville's turn, so don't feel alone, and I'll be there on Saturday supporting you, and the council will be there in spirit as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. We're going to take a moment here and come on over, Councilmembers, and join us, and waiting for a few other folks to come down here and join us. And again, for all those that joined us, since the meeting has started, we're honoring the ALS Golden West Chapter to be able to, this event, to Walk to Defeat ALS, which is on Saturday. Come, you can get right in the middle. Get in the middle. Okay, that was practice. Everybody say queso. Queso. Let's give everybody this good evening. Ready for your patients. Thank you, thank you everybody for your patience. Thank you for coming. Item 3.2 on our agenda this evening is oral communications from the public in the City Council. This is the time that any member of the public who would like to speak to an issue that is not on our agenda this evening, may feel free to come down to the podium. This is oral communications, item 3.2, any member of the public who would like to address us on any item that is not on the City Council's agenda this evening. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. We're in a public health crisis here, with many diseases we didn't used to see, and with the increased microwave radiation from smart meters and other wireless technology. These diseases are linked very much to neurological problems. The smart meters are being installed about 1,000 a day, against and contrary to the ordinance that Watsonville has passed and that the County of Santa Cruz has passed prohibiting such installation. I want to read you a few facts here, and I'll pass this out. PG&E smart meters, not smart, not green, not safe, not legal. In violation of Santa Cruz County law, Ordinance 5084, PG&E contractors, Wellington Energy, are installing wireless smart meters on people's homes and businesses against their will. Over 44 other California cities and counties have demanded a halt to the program. Because of safety risks, smart meters have caused a series of fires and explosions. Let's see. They are not UL certified, like every other electric appliance in your health. Health damage, smart meters emit radiation that the World Health Organization considers a Class 2B carcinogen, along with lead, and DDT, and benzene. Thousands of people are reporting adverse health effects after meters are installed. Bees are having, are being driven from their hives. Trees are suffering and dying around clusters of the meters, which emit radiation equivalent to living within 500 feet of a major cell tower. Privacy violations, smart meters record every detail of power usage, and they're collecting data and sending them to data collecting units. This is improper for utilities that are supposed to just be checking how much usage you have. Is that it? Or is that one minute?
No, keep going.
Okay. I want to recommend that people pick up this Connection magazine from this month of October. On the back of the very front page is an article, is an ad, "Are Smart Meters Making You Sick?", and there are lists of simple symptoms that people are reporting after smart meters are installed. I myself have met about a half dozen people who are suffering. One friend cannot stay in his house because of a wall of smart meters causing severe headache, and he cannot sleep or think. This is wrong, where people are being forced out of their home for some device that we are paying for. Any other appliance I know of can be returned and your money refunded, no questions asked. So this, we need you to protect the public health and well-being, and halt this installation, and restore the analog meters. Thank you.
Thank you. This is oral communications, any member of the public may address the City Council on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Angela Flynn, and I'm kind of following up on the previous speaker here about the smart meters and wireless radiation in general. I'm one of the millions of people in the world who identify as being electro-sensitive. I discovered this after I lived in a house that was very close to cell towers, I couldn't sleep at night.
Keep going, please, it's a problem with...
I couldn't sleep at night, and I started to have memory problems and other types of, like arthritic pain. I moved away from my house, I removed myself from all of this environment, and I recovered my health fully. However, I find I have to avoid high exposures to all of this wireless radiation. The fact that PG&E is putting wireless smart meters on every home in the territory that they cover, which includes Santa Cruz, Watsonville, and the whole Northern California area, is a huge problem for people like me. It's a growing problem for people who have never had symptoms before. I've talked to many people who have Wi-Fi cordless deck phones in their house. A smart meter has gone in, and they're finding that they can no longer tolerate those other wireless transmitters in their house, and that's because each transmitter adds to the level. So as it gets higher and higher, more people are likely to have serious health consequences. Right now, our guidelines that the FCC has is 1,000 microwatts, it's very high, it's not considered protective for health. China, Russia, Italy, Switzerland, and Morocco have a standard of 10. So ours is 1,000, their standard is a 10. I have a meter here where I can check the levels, and I can assure you, many homes are well above 10 when you get near their Wi-Fi routers, their deck phones. And now, again, with the smart meters added to that, it's increasing the overall exposure. More and more people are likely to get sick from this and to suffer ill health. It's something that really needs to be addressed on a major scale. I know it's larger than, you know, what can be addressed right here, right now, but people need to educate themselves on this. If someone's in a room that's right next to a wireless smart meter, they're the ones who are likely to suffer from that exposure. They should be watched and monitored for any possible ill health. Other people in the house may be having exposure, but it's higher the closer you are to the source. So again, there is this ad in the Connection magazine, it's free, you can pick it up in many stores, and please contact the CPUC to tell them if you are having ill health effects, and also copy to Nina Beatty, whose contact is in the Connection magazine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is oral communications, any member of the public like to address the City Council of Watsonville on any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing as there's none, I'm going to bring them back to council. Council, councilmembers? Councilman Hurst?
Thank you very much. I'm glad to see a large audience here this evening, and I know that we'll have good public dialogue. You know, I'd kind of forgotten about how immense the job of being a councilperson is. I hadn't done it for 13 years, and, you know, I kind of, and I'm not really sure how I did it before, and being working, and now that I'm retired, I have a little more time, but I'm certainly staying very busy on council work. And I won't bore everyone with all the details of it. I see the mayor, he's left already, but I have attended several of the Chamber of Commerce functions and appreciate the good work that the chamber's done, and participated in the business walk, and I found that very informative. Just the other day, we were in Livermore looking at the Livermore Downtown, which had rerouted a freeway and, or the state highway, rather, and improved their downtown significantly, and that was an informative visit. A couple of weeks ago, Councilmember Billisich and I were at a luncheon where the State Superintendent of Public Education, and Mayor Dodge as well was there, he was there a little later than we were, but he showed up, and that leads me into my quote this evening. I don't have any Will Rogers quotes or any Mark Twain quotes this evening, but I did want to say that decisions are made by those who show up. That's it for me this evening.
My thank you, Councilmember Hurst. Councilmember Billisich, how are you tonight?
Well, I also attended some chamber events, one being Rabobank Mixer, and it had a Hawaiian theme, well-attended, Councilman Hurst was also there. It was very nice to see mixers and the chamber so active in our community. And at the luncheon with the Superintendent of Public Instruction, I think his theme was, over and over, how important education is, of course, but I think it would really help to reduce unemployment in our city, and it was interesting to listen to him. Recently, Governor Brown signed Assembly Bill 189 into law, which supports adult education and enhances opportunities for employment, and really strengthens adult education, so we were happy to see that transpire. And then I also met with Chief Bisbee to discuss fire coverage and concerns of District 7, particularly in the Vista Montaña area and the senior community, and I'll give an update about that at a later date. And then Councilman Bursamine is on the Zone 7 flood control, and I just wanted to let you know that that committee continues to fight about the levy. We need more support in getting the levy cleared, and people from Monterey, Santa Cruz, San Bonito, and Santa Clara Counties are there, and there are letters going to Senators Boxer, Feinstein, and Army Corps of Engineers. We've got letters going to Washington DC to try and get more support for the levy. That concludes my remarks, thank you.
Councilmember Bursamine?
Well, I'm glad we have a full house tonight.
Well, I'm glad we have a full house tonight. I mean, it's great to see the high school students, the adult school students. It's great, I wish it was like that all the time. I think all in my remarks, mayor, so we can get to the point where we can let the students talk to us.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Montesino, Mayor Protemp.
Yeah, first, I want to recognize all the, some of the businesses over at the Freedom Boulevard area, especially Pajaro Valley Printers, Delta Glass, Freedom Body Shop, they all renovated and painted their storefronts. They look really nice, really enjoyable to see out there, so that's the kind of things that we need from businesses, so people are more in tune to what they're doing. I also want to do a public announcement for our, my school, my kid's elementary school, La Mark Elementary School, where needs your help. We want to start introducing our kids to instruments, and we are looking for donated instruments and volunteers to teach our kids to play instruments. And if you have some instruments or are indeed have some time to volunteer, if you know of instruments, call 761-7940. That's a school number. And we want to encourage our kids to teach them and learn them how to play an instrument, because sometimes that can take off as a career or a hobby for a lot of the kids, and they get to enjoy some of the fruits of their learning. I also want to, I picked up the pen at the Labor Council picnic area, and I picked it up there, because I had it in my car, and it says, it's "I Make a Difference Every Day." And I want to encourage, especially because we have a full house, especially of young kids, young adults, encourage you to, for you to make a difference every day. It could be anything, encouraging your siblings, encouraging your coworkers, your students, your friends, encouraging to do the right thing. We all need encouragement, we all, we all need some motivation out there. I know things are hard, but if you keep, if you keep positive, things will happen. If you keep the right perspective, things will happen. Be focused, be alert, be where opportunities are. We need to teach you that there's another world outside of Watsonville. You need to open up your eyes to a lot of you. There are things out there that you wouldn't imagine what's out there in the world, and we need to encourage all of you students to open up your eyes and see that glow in other areas, and even if you move out of the area. But it's encouraging to see you flourish when you get educated, when you get knowledgeable, and you come up to the podium and say, "I want to make a difference for my community." And one of these, one of you can sit up here, probably won't be here, but.
You probably will. Well, it is.
You never know.
But like I said, I just wanted, I wanted to encourage you to make a difference every day from your part and from the community, because we need your participation. We need your participation. You're a third of our population, and we need you. We need you to participate in some of the decisions that we do, because it's for your future, for your kids' future. If you can fathom you're going to have kids, or you're going to have a family, you're going to be needing some housing, some more educational opportunities here, more jobs. So we, I really encourage you to participate. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, council member. I'll keep my presentation brief. I, too, am happy to see so many people in the audience today. I didn't think I'd live that long to be able to see a full city council chambers, even though I know some of you were forced to come here in the name of education. But I quiero decir gracias por toda la gente aquí. Estamos in Watsonville, en la ciudad, here where we get a chance to be able to speak our minds and to be able to use the privileges and the freedoms that were granted to us by a lot of the members who have served in the service. And our Veterans Day is coming up. I recently had the opportunity to be able to speak in front of a group of wounded veterans who are on the ride, on the ride to recovery, who are passing through Watsonville. They allowed me the opportunity to be able to thank them, and I look forward to, we'll probably announce next city council meeting for the Veterans Day activities that are coming up, and I invite you all to join those, honor those of us who have our families and friends who are members that are in the service. And I was fortunate enough to be able to go to Starlight School and read Lama Lama, Red Pyjama, to a kindergarten, two kindergarten classes, and I have to say, that was one of the highlights that I've been able to do, while I've been able, in this position, to serve this community. So for all those who haven't read Lama Lama, Red Pyjama, it's become, fast, it's become one of my favorites, and I encourage you to read a book. Thank you. Councilmember Hearst?
Just one important announcement that I forgot to mention. The airport open house will be October 16th, that's a Sunday, October 16th, starting at nine o'clock in the morning. You're all welcome.
Thank you, council member. A lot of folks don't know that. Item 3, item 3.3 is reported out of closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, mayor. On item A1275, Main Street, the council took a report from staff on item B1A, the Viera lawsuit. The council also received a report from staff. And on item B1B, the Martinez lawsuit, the staff took some direction from council.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Item 4.0 on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Comments, questions, discussion?
Give approval.
Councilmember Bursamine, motion to approve?
I'll second that, but I got just a really quick question on 4.3. Is David still here?
Motion by Bursamine, second by Mayor Protemp Montesino.
Just, just really quickly, you may have missed it, but what's the corridor of the second phase for the Green Valley?
Oh, what was, I'm sorry.
4.3.
Yes.
What's the, was it Main through Freedom or?
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, Phase 1 went from almost to Highway 1 up to Main Street, and Phase 2 was Main Street to just beyond the driveway that goes into Home Depot.
Gotcha.
That was the limit.
Okay. Well, thank you. And is that the same construction company that we use for the Phase 1?
Phase 1 was constructed by Granite Construction, and Phase 2 was Monterey Peninsula Engineers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst?
Just a quick question on 4.3, Mr. Cook, before you leave the podium. Has all the striping been completed? I know we had some discussion about crosswalks and pedestrian safety. I just, and I guess I'll get to the point with my question. I understand the limitations that we have to observe regarding crosswalks. If people are still going to cross that street, I hope that they'll use the light. There was an intersection across from Melwood and the exit of the Watsonville Square Shopping Center, where there was a "Keep Clear" sign, signage painted in the street that's no longer there with the repaving. Are we done with striping and signage on that street?
Councilmember Hearst, yes, all the contract striping and signing is completed. Now, if we have issues, or, you know, as we go forward, if we find anything that is, you know, we think is needed to be added, you know, we can do that outside of the contract as part of our, either a special project or as part of our annual striping contract.
As an informational item to the public, could you bring back sometime the speed limits of Green Valley Road? Because I know it varies quite a bit from the freeway interchange all the way up to the Towers Old Hospital.
Yes, and in fact, periodically, we actually do speed studies on all of our major arterials, and then bring them to council based on what the speed service say, and then, based on those, recommend speed limits. Was there a particular part of it that you were concerned about?
I think that there used to be some signage indicating speed limits, but it may have been removed, and may have been removed for good reason. I think it's somewhat confusing with the various speed zones on that street as to where you're at, at what time.
Okay.
And how fast you're going.
We will look specifically at that, and if, and I may get some more information from you on that to see if something got missed.
Thank you very much for looking into that. The other comment or question I want to make on the consent agenda is that item 4.6, thank you in advance for appointing me to the Henry Mello Performing Arts Center Joint Powers Board Directors. I look, you know, I have a long history with the Mello Center. It was, I was the mayor when the Mello Center was constructed, so I'm looking forward to reinvigorating and assisting and helping out in any way I can with the Mello Center. And lastly, on 4.7, the appointment of Rhea DeHart to Parks and Recreation. You know, Councilmember Martinez takes a lot of heat in the community for sometimes a lot of good reasons, but boy, he's hitting a home run this evening in appointing Rhea DeHart to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So congratulations to him, and to Rhea.
We'll pass the message along. Any other questions, any item on the consent agenda? Councilmember Bilicich?
Just that I have a couple of questions on 4.1, but I'm going to talk to Mr. Pimentel at a later date about those. Thank you.
Any member of the public like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? Seeing as there's none? Can I get a roll call? Do I need a roll call on this?
Yes.
Bilicich?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes. Thank you very much. Before we go further, I had an announcement that I had written down and I forgot to make that I really wanted to get out to the public, that beginning October 14th, start time is not certain, but between 8:00 and 11:00, depending on the weather, there's going from Wildwood Drive to Chapel Road in Watsonville. Pacific Gas Electricity will be doing, doing some hydrostatic testing in that area for approximately, which could be close to a week. This is where some of you, they will be bringing some air blower, air movers will be installed at Wildwood and Chapel, and they're to bring some fresh air into the pipeline while they work on it. And so noise and some gas odors may be noticed at that, in that area, particularly around Chapel Road east of Home Road. So feel, I wanted to put the public somewhat on notice of that. We will make sure that we send out some more information on that to our local media outlets, but I did want to let people know that PG&E will be doing some testing in that area. So moving on, the item we're all here for this evening, item 6.0. It's a public hearing regarding downtown parking. And I never knew that downtown parking can so be so inviting to people to come. We should do that more often. Good evening, staff.
Good evening, Mayor Dodge and council members. My name is Tamara Vides, and I am a senior administrative analyst with the City Managers' Department. And with me tonight is Deputy City Manager Mario Maldonado. Tonight, we're here to continue the discussion of the parking report and the stakeholders' recommendations presented during the council meeting of September 27. During that council meeting, we presented a comprehensive report of the fourth meetings that we held with various stakeholders regarding downtown parking. The report that we presented contained information and the feedback that we gathered at these meetings, and regarding current trends of how parking is used, some concerns, and specific recommendations made by the stakeholders about how to improve parking in certain areas of the downtown, and particularly, we looked at how to maximize the use of our downtown parking structures. Council decided.